All right. Oh, sorry. Good. Good. As always. I think you've got many suggestions for here.
Yes. I told her very shortly.
So I had your... I still have my... That's all you have to do. I can't concentrate when I tell you.
So you got that?
I don't feel damn bad. That is for the time. So then our boss is going to be...
Yeah.
Might be today.
We've got to wait for Chris here. Or what's the name?
Justin.
You ever tell me?
James.
James Puthy.
Oh. Boy, he's doing his talk. Oh, that's okay. Any time of year.
Thank you. All right. Who's got city development planning? Who's that? That would be you. All right. Attention.
I want to call city planning and development to order. And the first item on the agenda is engineering. So, hi. James, come on up here. Thank you.
Come on down. Because this item...
Yes, please. Is that really...
First one of the charges that the county is filing to any... Would you have a four-year... Is the issue that you're working on or the six forty-one is for the community like a street? They have been sold in form of the state by order.
Are there any questions? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thanks. Thank you so much.
You should walk. I stay for the right...
First item is authorize the city of Schenectady as lead agency for the improvement of Dale Park.
Yes, that's correct.
The first thing about Dale Park, just the corner, you said? And the city wants to... The fact is that four years, explaining to them what that is, they have a question.
Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Just to give you a little overview. So, the planning is going toward clearing a lot of the brush that hide both of the water features in the park. It's gotten very, very overgrown. And then they're also working on a new entrance at, um, the street where St. Mary's, that school is.
East Street.
No, it's a side, the side street.
Flatridge or...
I think, yeah. It's not pro...
Not Prospect?
But it's Irving, yes. So, anyway, it's going to have a nice new fence. It's going to have a fencing that will prohibit four-wheel vehicles and motorized vehicles. It'll have signage. It'll have improved lighting. So it'll look like an entrance to a park rather than somewhere to slip into the park so to promote more positive activity. So, it's very exciting. Dale Park Task Force is really excited about it and it's another step. They also talk about putting fountains in the water features which will keep the water aerated, which hopefully then we can get some fish to live in there and, you know, just overall beautification to go along with my size project of coming down the other hill with the nature path, nature walk.
Can you have a question? May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next item is authorize the city of Schenectady as lead agency for the improvements of Dale Park to declare that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment.
Yes, so... As we're doing, put out the brush because it's going to play the grass. This is just a declaration saying that we're not going to be running against the school through school. It's a part of what we're... For... We're not going to have... ...
They have a motion?
A moment. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, all right. Thank you, sir. The next item is a CR, breast cancer awareness month. Ms. Perazzo.
Are you just recognizing October as breast cancer awareness month?
They have a motion.
A moment. A second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next item is discussion, Boys and Girls Club temporary location, Simon's Park Building Facility. Mr. Coach.
Thank you very much. I'm just passing an email around. As you know, the Yates Village Project is underway. With that, they're going to be taking down the office area that the Boys and Girls Club is currently utilizing. And Shane Bargui, the executive director, sent an email to Mayor McCarthy and Assistant Paul Cottage hoping to utilize the Simon's Park Pavilion effective the SAP until the end of June of 2020. The Boys and Girls Club will pay any utilities or any expenses to keep the pavilion up. But again, in the north end of the city, they are really the only youth agency that serves that community up there. And according to the school's own attendance, that is the largest congregation of youth in the city of Schenectady, the north end of the U.S. section. So urging your support to allow the mayor to sign a good contract with us so that the Boys and Girls Club buys us. Again, Camille Sinofsky, as you can see in there, is fully aware of it and on board. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else to add to that?
No. I think describing, they're really looking to have it run through June...
Of 2020. Yep.
Ms. Perazzo.
So, that building usually gets winterized, right? In the bill?
So, we would, we would not winterize it this year.
Yep.
They would be in a, they're agreeable to pay the utility costs and related expenses.
That's great. And then hopefully, we still can stay there too because they usually have a hard time planning home in the winter.
They usually won't.
Well, they go down to the other church. We haven't talked about that, but that's maybe a scenario where they could just stay right in the facility within Simon's Park.
Yeah. I know the church, starting last year, they had some problems with availability. So, it might be a good solution for them.
We, I think, I'm, Shane has said, is indicating this email they're going to work around their gathering.
Great.
Any other discussion? So we need to move it on? Authorize the mayor to...
Turn it into a leasing agreement with the Boys and Girls Club.
Make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Any other business before health and rec?
Move for you, John. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Right. I'll call government operations to order. And the first is ceremonial resolution honoring all veterans and men and women currently serving in the armed forces. Mr. Riggi?
Yes. Something we could do, you know, and let the troops attend thirty-one veterans.
Need a motion? By Ms. Porterfield?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Riggi. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a ceremonial resolution recognizing Juanes's four hundred year anniversary. And it's pretty straightforward. So, if I can have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. And next, we have appointments to the IDA as a placeholder reminder and the discussion around that.
Yeah. If I can, I'll just hand you out the current members of the board because we always want to know who they are and what they are. The openings that we have. This is the current board. And there's an opening because Randy D. Genova has moved. So there actually should be a total of seven members on this board. We only have six right now. And of course, we're anticipating that Carl Feltig will win Judge, judge him. So that would create a second opening.
So I have two resumes I wanted to get out, but I couldn't get on my email.
That's fine. And that's what we're doing. Yeah. And I've got one here from a Nicholas Brooks McDowell who's interested. I can just leave these in your box right now, just for consideration. We're not going to put this out until November fourth meeting. So it'll give everybody time. I just wanted, you know, just copy the gentleman's resume. Again, we've got those two more. And possibility of Tracy Chance as well. Apparently Tracy, I sent her an email and tried to contact her as well. So that might be a possibility of third opening.
No, not according to her. I spoke with her this weekend.
She was interested? Oh, all right. Then she hasn't returned my calls at all. So if you have a contact for her, maybe share it with me afterwards.
Yeah. I ran it somewhere someplace, but I'm, I think...
Okay. Very good. Well, that's good to hear. All right. And if I can, just go on to the bar one, Ms. Perazzo.
Uh, yes.
All right, too. So I've got this one as well, the same thing. Here's Nicholas for the current members. There's only one opening on that. And that's Mary Del Sandro. And Ms. Del Sandro has expressed interest to remain on the board. So she will be sending us her resume in addition to anybody else at the council adds here that they're interested. So again, I'm going to put that on the agenda for November fourth. So if you get resumes to move all four before then, that would be appreciated.
Great. Any other questions or discussion around either item? Okay. Then we'll move on to courtroom renovations. Mr. Posher.
Yeah. And I think, Mr. Mayor, we want this to go in executive session possibly, or is it something you can talk about public session or is that what I get to ask? Just trying to find where we are with the courtroom renovations and where we're working on the report on.
We reached an agreement with OCA. We're going to make modifications within the existing footprint. Anything we do, I think the way it'll be structured will be done within this fiscal year in a manner where OCA will pay for it. And so Judge Katina's happy with it and give them a little bit more space in the basement for court officers. But, you know, we're moving ahead and everybody seems semi-happy.
And is that also an additional courtroom as well? Chambers?
No. Chambers, it'll be chambers for the judges, but they'll use the existing courtroom staff, courtroom space.
Which is, I'm going to...
Courtroom here, city council chamber, courtroom in the police station. And sometimes they use county court.
County. All right. And there's not going to be any cost to the city then you're estimating to the city? And I think we should put away capital funds is what my question is directed to.
No. Any, I can't say absolutely there won't be any cost to the city, but anything would be within an operating budget. It's not major renovation. Anything we have to put in a capital budget.
Mr. Riggi.
This will satisfy the mandate?
At this point, no. OCA has historically never satisfied in long periods of time. We're not talking about building a courtroom. We're doing multi-million dollar expenditures that'll exist within the existing footprint to be able to handle the caseload.
So is that something you get a copy of, the council? I mean, has the courts accepted this already? Or is it writing someplace, Gary? That's in stone?
Well, I haven't agreed...
Can we have something from that? Let us acknowledge.
I don't know what you're asking for at this point.
Just what you were talking about.
It doesn't require any action from the council.
I think the poor thing is there that the state, the courts have accepted what your plan, your proposal is or what our proposal is. Has there something in writing from Judge Katina to that effect?
Don't have anything in writing or handshake. He's working with city engineer or his staff is.
Other questions? Mr. Riggi?
Ultimately, do they want to see a courthouse or a courtroom? You know, different facility than we're offering now.
What Judge is telling me is they will be able to operate within the existing three courtrooms and probably be a hearing room created. We'll make a modification here for a jury chamber or jury deliberation room. And it'll be modifications, it'll be four spaces or adequate spaces for judges' chambers in this corner of the building above us.
Because the council chambers are taking a beating, you know, with those desks, as I said, or whether the council members may be. They're falling apart from being pushed back and forth. Some of the chairs are broken, so I don't know who that comes under, whose responsibility that is. But there's extra wear and tear, that's for sure.
I can go back to them and ask them that. They have been good in the past in terms of doing some of the upgrades. Might be to start the discussion now and then look in the state budget after April first of next year to some of those.
Since it's a dual purpose, be a good idea.
So again, I'm going to put this back on the agenda November fourth. I just want to see if we can get something in writing from New York State that this is accepted. Plans accepted. The judge has okayed the plan that we're talking about. I just want, because we've been doing this for many, many years and we've been hearing that we're done and not done. And I just hope to see something written from somebody, New York State, that this is actually going to happen. Otherwise, we've got to put something in our capital project. And that's really, I was trying to drive it this evening. Do we need to put aside any money for capital?
And I am representing to you that we do not have to put any money in the capital budget.
Okay. All right. So again, I'll put this on for two weeks just to see if we can get a follow-up. As far as you understand, as far as you're making sure that it's going to be happening.
Other questions to come? Anything else to come before government operations?
Make a motion for that.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Call back to order to finance committee. First item on the agenda is the 2020 city budget approval. Take it, we're going to be doing that next Monday at 5:30. We'll pass it out of committee and vote it on at the regularly scheduled council meeting.
That's going to be on the email, right? But we're going to do a meeting this Friday as well, right, John?
Um, yeah. Sorry about that. Yes. What time is that going to be?
5:30.
5:30.
5:30 Friday for the council to come together and give our recommendations and whatever to the finance committee to make whatever changes we have to do.
Then on Monday, we're going to meet on...
And Monday, hopefully, we'd vote on it, yeah.
We're going to meet at 5:30 before...
Friday. No, Friday, Friday at 5:30.
I got my dates screwed up. It's Friday and Monday we'll vote on it.
Yes.
Seven o'clock.
Yes. I'm, I got my dates screwed up. Sorry about that. Ms. Perazzo.
Just for, so are we going to try to pass it out of committee on Friday or do we need to meet at like 6:30 on Monday to pass it out?
Pass out of committee, right? That's what I'm assuming. And we'll have Mr. Ferrari available Friday, hopefully, at 5:30. Because he's got to have his little machine there and doing all the numbers and telling us where we stand, right? Right? I mean, that's how we've done it in the past, I think, right, John? We did that last year.
Yeah, I think so.
And we just, you, the finance committee move it out of committee and then we bring it to the floor on the 28th.
Any other questions? All right. So we'll continue on with our budget discussion. We left off with the finance administration. That would be line A 1310, which is page... Three, two. Sorry.
Come on, Sir Ian. How's everybody today? All right?
Well, we'll tell you about nine o'clock at night how we are. We're still there.
Sure enough. Just get situated here real quick. Just a quick overview. The total finance budget, not just administration, but, you know, everything that's under finance, the total budget has only increased by 1.12%. So just want to let you know that that consists of all the different departments. So we're looking at A 1310. What number are we looking at, John?
We didn't have any questions submitted, so just an overview of...
Oh, okay. Listen to that. A 1310. The whole finance administration increase is 5% for the budget compared to 2019. One of the features is a, is a increase of pay for the deputy director, which, you know, we've actually got a couple that we're looking into right now, hoping to get them into work, you know, by end of November, early December, January, of course. The other feature is we're looking to take our junior account and move them up to a regular account. Oh, that's 1315. Excuse me. Yep. Jumping the gun there. We're looking, yeah, we're looking to increase the deputy commissioner. We got the commissioner of finance, give him a little bump. What else? Everything else is basically the same.
Are there any questions?
Just one. I'm sorry. I noticed we have money for traveling conference. What is that? 3,000? What are we looking to...
Traveling conference.
Kind of supporting that, but it's not...
For the new deputy, for the munis, for the new deputy to go to the munis out in Texas this year. Munis convention, you know. It seems, you know, we figure it's going to be new to just give them better insight of how the system is.
Perfect. Very good. Excellent.
All right. Why don't you move on to 1315, accounts and disbursements?
Okay. For accounts and disbursement, that is where we're planning to move our junior accountant, Derek, move him up to a, a, a regular accountant. Derek does, has a master's degree in accounting, by the way. We want to move him up. He's doing a very good job as a junior. We're trying to keep, we want to keep him with the city. He's a young kid, 20, 28 years old, 29 years old. We want to keep him interested in moving forward in the city. I predict in, in 10 years from now, he'll be the commissioner.
Any questions?
It's off the record.
Off the record.
Those are predictions.
I'm just, I'm just saying, he's really, really bright kid.
I actually have a different question. The rate that he's been put in, is that the lowest step?
It's a grade, step two. We're starting on step two because of where he is and, you know.
Okay.
On the next page, receipts, A 1325.
A 1325. And your receipts, really, the only increase is the 2% for the management raises. Everything's really basically all the same.
Okay. And why don't we move on to page 16 with A 1910, unallocated insurance, and then go on to 1989.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to tell you guys...
It's page 62, right?
Just want to get my insurance. Yes, we received, you know, increase of, for projected insurance premiums. As you know, we did have a few lawsuits and whatever which caused an increase. Actually, it's not as bad as we thought, you know. We actually have been paying, paying quite a bit. So we're looking at about a 3% or 4% increase. So we're staying within where we, we're hoping and really has been as we're looking at our loss ratios in the past six months, they've really, they're really starting to come down. So that's where, that's where we're hoping to continue that and also bring the, bring the cost of the...
Are there any questions? All right. Move on to 1989.
Excuse me a minute. Missed that on my sheets here.
Ms. Selena. Ms. Selena.
Yes. Ms. Selena, some distributed. 485, right? Contingency? Yes. Yeah, that's a, you know, we're going to put that in there. We use that contingency money basically for emergency demolitions, emergency, things that, that, you know, we did not budget for, you know, we're trying to keep it within. But mostly, in the past few years, we've been using emergency demolitions that are not covered by insurance from the homeowner or whatever.
Are there any questions? Ms. Selensky, was in us.
So it went from 250? Is that what it went from?
Yeah, 250 to 300. Right.
Okay. Is that sufficient? Because it seems like the cost of the demos have been going up significantly.
We're hoping that we have to demo less. Usually, usually, we really don't even like to use it for demos, but that's usually the catch-up. We just like to hold it for the catch-up.
Yeah. No, I, I've just, I've seen, I think the last one I looked at, it was a lot more expensive.
Yeah. You know, that's why we increased it by 30,000.
You had trace through fire.
Yeah. No, but I'm just saying, I just want to make sure where there's enough, there was enough in it because the cost of the demolitions have...
We could always use more. We thought, we thought with another 50 grand, we'll cover it. Cover us, you know? That's good.
Any other questions? All right. Let's move on to A 9010, which is on page 46, employee benefits.
David Goose wants to say employee benefits because, you know, as you can see, you know, all the total employee benefits have increased dramatically. Not, not bad as, you know, the retirements, but mostly medical. Our medical, in which, which, you know, we monitor very carefully. We are self-insured. You know, we meet regularly with MVP and we have a consultant that we meet with on a regular basis, see what our costs and what our standings are. We're actually looking at a huge increase this year. And that's driven by, I got that in my sheet here. It's driven by, will we, just 2.7% increase is just where we figured about the vacancies that we're going to be filling this year. The medical trend is projected to increase at least by 6%. And the pharmacy trend also by 6%. We're also looking at increased stop-loss premiums. That's for high-cost climates. We have a special stop-loss, so when they hit over a certain limit, we have another insurance carrier that covers that. Now, speaking of that, the high-cost climates, that is one of our key contributors to our high costs. We have 10 high-cost climates right now. They are 23% of our total budget. Right? Yep. And on the, on the pharmacy side, pharmaceutical stuff, we have three high-cost climates that take 14% of our total budget. But we do have some sick people here. I mean, and it's, it's a huge benefit. We, we have a great benefit. And, you know, like I said, we're watching, we're keeping it close. We're doing a lot better than the natural trends, but, but it is increasing. And that's, that's, I'll tell you, what, what the big costs are. We're looking at the, even, even with the premiums that our employees pay, some, you know, they some pay five, some pay 20, some pay 10, some pay zero, that covers less than 5% of the total costs, you know, with, you know, out of their pockets and the city covers the rest. But we have great, great insurance. And I, and I think anybody who's been sick or used it and realized that, you know, our insurance is, you know, one of the top notches, you know.
Ms. Perazzo.
So even with those high-cost people, though, they reach a certain threshold and it switches over to the...
Stop-loss.
Right. So it's, even though, even though collectively it's 23% of the budget, that doesn't come out. We don't pay all that.
We paid to, we paid 23% of the budget. Then anything over that...
Then the stop-loss.
Then the stop-losses.
Yeah.
There's significant.
There's, yeah.
Numbers.
Yeah.
Just one out of the box, have you thought about combining with some other groups, increase our pool size, so we can maybe drive down the cost?
In fact, we, we've been talking with the county, because they're self-insured too, we, we have been discussing all that, you know, we're looking, especially for the future, we were really holding our own there for a while, but, you know, the increase is, you know, it's a big increase, you know, we're, like I said, looking close to almost a two million dollar increase on the health insurance.
Ms. Peraza.
But we're running about on budget this year, we're at eighty percent right now?
Well, yeah, but you got to realize too, that you're about a month and a half behind, we anticipate.
Let's just do the intercept.
Yeah, yeah. That's probably through July, we're actually, with, with what they received, you know. We're, we're projecting between eight hundred thousand and one point one million dollar deficit in the total of medical coverage this year.
Over budget?
We're going to be over budget, yeah, and, and I think, when I sent that paperwork for, with the budgets, I think I showed you how far, I think through, through August or September, I can't remember, I think it was through, I think it was through August for the health, we're already one point three more than we spent, and then last year at this time, so we predict that trend going on, we're hoping that it slows down, but it really doesn't look it.
All right, let's see, are there any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to debt service, which is A ninety-seven-ten, which is on page forty-eight.
Our total debt service is increasing a bit this year, but again, what we're doing, what we're doing is, we're looking at, and we've been very creative and very lucky, we refinanced two years ago, we saved a ton of money on interest, we're, we're really, you know, usually we're like five years within our bands going forward, we're able to, now we actually made them all bonds, now we're only two years behind, so we're looking at the trend, and, and actually, you know, the market's been going up and down, but it looks like if we keep, as lucky as it has been, we're, we're looking to be right up to date to have our band just be one year behind, and we're looking, being able to get a very favorable rate again this year.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to A thirteen fifty-five, which is on page five, assessment.
Okay, total assessment, that, that's actually decreasing by three point nine percent, and that's the reason is we have a new, a new IPS person in the department, so we went from a grade six to grade one, she started, started, actually, last Tuesday, so she started last Tuesday, so that's the reason for the drop, basically, everything else is the same, everybody's the same, they're doing a great job, as you know, our, our assessment equalization rate is going down twenty, twenty to one point zero five, we're looking like we're going to make the trend by twenty twenty-one, hopefully, there'll be a hundred percent equalization, which, you know, helps us with the states and all the different things.
Any questions? All right, why don't we keep Anthony there, we'll do eight fourteen thirty, human resources, page eight.
Okay, human resources, it's really, and I have to tell you, what our, one, two things we're, we're looking to bump up our, our HR personnel, Tiffany White, a small percentage of the sixty-nine-five, that, that whole HR administration has really changed in the past few years. Before, it was basically supervising payroll and just making sure people get on and off, but now, we're dealing with payroll, we're dealing with sexual harassment, we're dealing with, you know, harassment, all that stuff, and she's, she's giving classes for us, and she's setting up training for us, setting up training for the police, and getting all this stuff done, she deals with the workers' comp, and we were talking, in fact, what we did right away, the pay family, and you, you know, so that's why we're talking about that. Our biggest thing that's happening is that Cheryl, who's our, our benefit administrator, she, Cheryl Michael, she's planning to retire in July of twenty twenty. Now, she's been, you know, a long time a city employee, and, and you guys know, if you have a question to call her about insurance or whatever, she's right on. So what our plan is to do, we're going to hire somebody in January, she's going to actually retire September, we're going to hire somebody in January, and have her train them until she leaves, because we, that's one of those things that we feel is a very critical, very critical position. You know, our finance department, we don't just write checks, you know, we really take care of our employees, we take care of all the bills, you know, we, you know, we.
So that's where that point five comes in, and?
Yes, that's, yeah, because we figured we're going to put an lease for us here.
Okay, because that was a question.
Yeah.
Just those key words.
So you're going to hire, you're going to hire in January, are you going to, are you going to try to get a start in January, or are you going to?
Yeah, we're going to start in January, we're going to, yeah, we want her to start in January.
Right, so you have an app, do you have a posting out now for it, or?
I believe, I believe we started that, yes, Tiffany, we, we wanted to start getting clientele knowing that it won't start until January, because we want to give them as much time as possible, point five, we're like, we're hoping that Cheryl stays. I, I have, I have in my notes here that she's, she's, might retire September, but I think she told me personally she'd like to leave in July, and probably use her time till September, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that she'll stay right to September, or if we need it, we're going to be able to use her, you know.
Any other questions? Ms. Porterfield.
For the Department of Action Officer, I see this show just a one-person department, so is there any thought to adding to that, or at least having support staff, because based on what he's doing, he's doing a great job in this.
Yeah, I, I thought Ron said he was probably looking to get an intern or whatever, but he never mentioned about anything being full-time or paying, you know. I mean, as, you know, we talked about it.
So there's no thought to adding anybody to the department?
He never really, never really asked for it or mentioned that, but he did say that he was thinking of having an intern help him out, and I said, fine, you know, whatever he needs. We're about to give him two, we're working on getting him in that whole new payroll, not payroll, but that firm of action software, help him save a lot of time, so that, that should, we free him up a lot of it too, where the companies will be able to send their payrolls and all that stuff into the system, and does whatever, whatever those guys do.
We can verify compliance.
Yes, correct.
All right, Mr. Falteko, move, we'll bring in Ms. Deo, I believe that's all Anthony's stuff, then we'll do development, which is on page forty-four, A eighty-six eighty-six. Yeah, page forty-four.
I kind of had some images to show, but I think we don't have reader on there yet, so it's okay, I'm just going to pass out this overview, and just excuse, I wrote, I had a note there, but.
That's the son of a gun.
Yeah, it's fine, it's just a handwritten note out there, but, so we'll just go, we'll just go through this, and I think that'll be fine. All right, so thanks, everyone, for having me here tonight, I wanted to just kind of go over some of the things that development has been working on, which I know everyone is probably familiar with these things, but I think that there's been an effort to really work on unified development, and really change the way that we're working with the community, with our housing partners, with the land bank, in the way that we are looking at some of the issues that we deal with in terms of vacant properties, homeownership, and data-driven development. So I just wanted to give a brief update, I'm not going to go through everything line by line, but for the Craigman Complete Streets Plan, the social impact of this project has been pretty significant in terms of participatory design and engaging people in the design process of their own streetscape, so that's something that's been instrumental towards neighborhood stabilization and towards different connections happening in the community that has had some meaningful outcomes already, we are finishing the planning stage of that by the end of this year, so next week, I think I sent you all, we're having a final presentation, and then we're going to be looking into implementation for that. Stockade Resilience, that is the flood mitigation plan, we recently have been working with the housing movers and doing some geotechnical studies to get into detail about the feasibility of elevating and relocating structures, so that's all been going really well, and we are working closely with Place Alliance and with the hydrologists to really come up with something that thinks about the stockade in the next hundred and fifty years, and not just the next twenty years, for example, so we're really trying to look at long-range strategies as we think about making significant investments in dealing with the flood mitigation issue. For Climate Smart Communities, this was a grant that was received through the CFA, and we recently had a, just a stakeholders meeting with a lot of people who are working on sustainability issues, and it was like a brainstorming session, even though this grant is really just looking at municipal greenhouse gas emissions and doing a vulnerability assessment for the city, we're hoping that that same kind of tactic can, can really look citywide at our operations and even individual homes, and how we're dealing with sustainability. Demolition, so we had a total of sixteen properties slated for demolition in the twenty nineteen year. Overall, this is a one point five million dollar investment in play removal, creating redevelopment opportunities, and some of the examples of this is seventeen oh six Carey Street, where we, that demolition just got completed, it'll be a habitat home. Another, another example is in, on Schenectady Street in Hamilton Hill, where we are making way for a sculpture park through the Hamilton Hill Art Center, that's also connected to the Phoenix Walks art project through thriving neighborhoods. So we're just really trying to think about strategic ways, and we're working really closely with the land bank to identify priority areas where we focus these efforts, in conjunction with housing redevelopment, and so that we're not just demolishing buildings without a plan for, you know, the site to use afterwards. Along with that, you know, in development, we are doing restructuring, we received a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant from Lisk through the Attorney General's Office for the Neighborhood Stabilization Coordinator position. This is really going to help us track performance measures when we're talking about zombie properties and vacant properties, and really being able to look at the data that can inform and better drive our decision-making, so that's really huge, and, yeah, so with that, we are, we are looking to hire a new zoning officer, working really closely with the codes department in coordinating efforts around zombie and vacant properties. Planning Commission, we had forty-three new businesses granted approval in the last year, January through September, hundred and thirty-four residential units, Hillside View, Renaissance Square, has a kickoff meeting tonight, actually, the former school up on Eastern Avenue, so that's, that's also part of our NRSA, our focus area, we're really trying to combine efforts with the redevelopment that's happening. And then for zoning, we've been working on zoning amendments coming into twenty twenty, as you all probably remember, we, the comprehensive plan is for twenty twenty, now we really need to set the vision for the next ten, twenty years. So we're looking at some amendments, working with the codes department, and hopefully, we'll be presenting that information to you really, you know, really soon, like before the end of the year, for, for sure. And then Historic Commission, we had forty-two applications, went through for review for renovations, and then just moving into our work through the CDBG and the HUD process, this is, this is over two million, just for the CDBG funding, and this goes to over forty different projects that serves more than four thousand low and moderate individuals and households in the city. So, you know, some examples of this is the Construction Skills Training Program, which has served approximately eighty-five city residents so far, in terms of craft training, so that we can put our residents to work on the redevelopment that's happening in the city. And this is all related to the NRSA that was created in, in the Hamilton Hill and Dale neighborhoods, and that's really been our focused effort, and we're really seeing visible changes, and we're looking forward to combining that with the stabilization efforts through the new position that was created. Along with that, the Mont Pleasant Plan allows us to invest over five hundred thousand of HUD resources into this neighborhood, again, working with our housing partners and doing a focused effort, we're really seeing a lot of opportunity on Crane Street, and part of that has been, you know, connected with the Craigman Connection Project, and just looking at development opportunities, facade grants, and, you know, the different parks and things that are there. The lead program, it's, it's really, that's really going well, by the end of the grant period, which is a three-year period, we're hoping to assist two hundred and five units in the removal of lead, and we're also looking into ways that we can combine that with weatherization, so that when, you know, when people are going in to do the, the lead abatement, we can also think about other issues that might, and other grants that might come into play, like, like making things more energy efficient while they're kind of doing the work of removing the lead, so that's something that we're, we're, we're hoping to focus on as well. And then we just list some of the other funding sources and grants, like the Orchard Park Grant and Jerry Burrell, we actually just released the RFP for Orchard Park, and Jerry Burrell, we're working with the state right now to finalize the contract on that. So overall, there's really a lot happening, I, I've noticed in my time here, which is, you know, just about two years, just that there's, there's a lot of kind of like alliance happening, you know, between, between businesses, between, you know, government people like us, and between education, and I think that, you know, moving forward, we just want to continue to build those alliances and, and keep, keep up the work that we're doing in a unified effort, so thank you.
There were several questions submitted, the first is A eighty-six eighty-six, four oh four, fees for services, why was this increase to seventy-two thousand dollars, the answer submitted was timing issue, but a consultant with Sue Lombardi and Kristen to expound on that.
So this, it wasn't increased?
What's our grant writer?
Increased to seventy-two thousand.
I don't.
Increase was due to prior year purchase order, where you, we're going to increase the budget for Sue, for doing the, to help do the consolidated plan?
Yes, yeah, because we have our five-year consolidated plan that needs to get done this year for, for the HUD approval, so we anticipate needing to increase those services.
Ms. Peraza.
The adopted budget in two thousand nineteen was seventy-two thousand, wasn't increased.
Yeah, that's, that was, that's what I was thinking, I think it was the same last year.
I think, I don't remember who submitted that, but whoever did, I just saw the two thousand eighteen, missed the two thousand nineteen. A eighty-six eighty-seven, one hundred, why is the Fair Housing Coordinator eliminated, everybody was sent an email on that today, if you could.
Yeah, I think this has to do with the efficiency and carrying out the services and the, and the shared vision of the city's goals. As I mentioned, we have restructuring happening in the department, we've, we're, we're just kind of, we've moved, you know, the, we moved Matt Smith into a senior planning position, we will be hiring a homeownership coordinator, we have the new position, the stabilization coordinator, so we, we're trying to really look at our efficiency and where we see duplicative efforts, and this is one of the places where, you know, if we're talking about thirteen, this year, we've, we've had about thirteen, you know, approved applications through this program, and this is really something that we think the merge between BNI and Community Land Trust can handle, the intake part of this process, because it definitely doesn't translate into a full-time job, if you're talking about thirteen applicants, you know, and over an entire year, so we've been just trying to think about that, and looking at our housing counseling program as well, and looking, because, you know, when somebody goes to housing counseling, they're already looking at all of the financials and all the things that would be necessary to, to be approved for the second mortgage program, so I don't, I think it's just sort of like an extra step, and sometimes it creates barriers between things, just like moving fluidly and transparently, so, you know, we're just, we're just trying to look at that, and particularly, when we had our HUD monitoring this year, and we visited TRIP, and we were in Troy and talking about home funding, they, they do it that way, like TRIP really kind of just does the intake and the housing counseling all in one, and then they make their recommendations based on the guidelines that we give them to do so, so it's not that the city doesn't have, we, we ultimately are providing funding, so ultimately, we have to come up with the criteria that's used, but we, we don't need to, we don't need to have those services happen in-house, and this particular position, it just, it's not, again, it's just not a full-time position, and it, and it hasn't been for, for quite some time, so in addition to what I kind of sent over, I think those are just kind of what we've been thinking of.
And what I mentioned too, that the housing, you have to, to get into that program, you have to have the housing counseling.
Yes.
So it's actually the next step for housing council, which would be a nice, and a combination would, would already produce, right?
Right, right.
Ms. Porterfield.
So, first of all, that position is not required for us to have in the city, it's not, and, and I just know because I sit on the board that not everyone gets housing counseling by the time they get to us, they should have, but it doesn't always happen.
It's one of the requirements.
Right, and then. But it doesn't always happen.
So that's what I typed that up, so. BNI and Community Land Trust, they're still waiting for the last approval from the Attorney General's Office on that. That, we hope, is going to set up a more comprehensive level of engagement and assessment, so that we're going to be better able to deal with the needs within the community, but also access greater levels of funding at the state to implement. also access greater levels of funding at the state to implement those plans. And so, this roughly $100,000 a year that the city has set aside for this loan program is to incorporate it in that bigger picture, so this money from the state is the more comprehensive financial training, homeownership training, so that we'll have a pipeline that people will understand there's one place to go and can move through in a manner that's going to also address greater need within the community, where today, BNI, Community Land Trust, other things, they're doing a good job, but they're not necessarily keeping up with the total needs of the city. And so, hopefully, this new structure is going to be able to have the resources, well, identify, find better the problem, and then be able to access funding, be able to meet the full needs of the community.
Ms. Peras.
So, personally, I think this is a very important role the city plays, and this is a very important role for us to have in City Hall. And the Fair Housing Luncheon brings that back to me over and over again every year. You know, the success stories and the services that are offered to city people, residents get a home for the first time in their lives and really changes lives, and because BNI's not there yet, that merger is not completed and all of that, I just, I think we're doing a disservice to city residents by not having this role. I'll be advocating that we keep this role.
Next is A8687100, the planner, one or senior planner, why the increase in the salary? The answer provided was position is currently vacant. It would be given to Matt Smith, and I believe in Ms. Yoot's answer, she expounded upon that.
And also, just to add, we, when we lost our assistant planner, we never hired someone in that position, so that's also, you know, part of this, and saying, you know, let's get someone in there that really knows the city and has a lot of experience, almost in lieu of filling the assistant planner role.
And then, the next question is why is home coordinator line decreased? The answer provided was staff change, new personnel start beginning rate. Are there any additional questions? No? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Of all the salaries here, how much or percentage-wise is covered through our CDBG grant allocation? Do you know, do either of you know? Because a lot of these are in the CDBG, right? Are being funded through that grant?
Yes.
So, if, you can maybe send that to us.
I can do that.
So, Juchwayne, 638, so the 8687, John, 100.
Yep.
All that is covered by CDBG funding.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, and nothing above that, right? Your position, nothing like that?
I think part of my position is as well. Yeah, right.
And nobody else, none of the planners, or anybody else?
I don't think anyone else up there except for me.
Okay.
And we have, we also, through CDBG, it's a percentage of fervor of action, percentages of.
Right, yeah, just puts a small piece.
Yeah, all small pieces.
And just another thing to mention, like, our revenue estimates have went up a lot from 2017 for the SNAP program, and it was just based on the way we've been utilizing CDBG funds to offset this cost. So, I think it was a 50% increase from SNAP and 33% from codes, so that's been a big help to really look at that, and then, yeah, things like Ron's position and how we.
Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. So, now that Mr. Coach's question, this all was through CDBG funding. What happens to that CDBG funding that was allocated to Fair Housing Coordinator? Did that get moved somewhere else?
I think that that is just, I mean, we can, yes, that would be reallocated to just the services and the goals that we're trying to achieve. So, whether that be housing, whether it be public works, just.
Again, my intent to make recommendations is to go to entity, the merger between BNI and Community Land Trust, so that loan program will become more incorporated in their actual delivery of service.
Okay, so, I have to agree with Ms. Peras. I think that we should see how this all works out first, and quite frankly, there have been people who are saying currently, the way it is now, things, it hasn't been done well for them, BNI, Land Trust program. So, I understand that the merger is supposed to make that better, but I don't know that the merger making it better and then adding another layer to it all at one time is probably the best way to go, because people have said it just has not worked out well.
Well, I think we've been also struggling with the way that the, with that the program has been working through this office, and a lot of this really did come through our HUD monitoring, and just highlighting all the issues and just that the lax synergy between the housing counseling and the people being recommended and the criteria that's needed for the program. So, we need to figure out a better way to streamline it. And like I said, assisting 13, you know, it's great, like, that those things should be happening, but it doesn't, it doesn't justify a full position to do that service, and at the same time, it becomes disconnected from the larger just ecosystem of the programs.
I understand what you're saying. We have people that used to say are being underworked, and then we clearly know that there are people being overworked, so maybe that's something that needs to be balanced with the tax, not necessarily running the position after budget.
Nobody's overworked here. Straightforward.
Well, you might want to ask them about that.
I'm just not going to say it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Utilities Administration, A1620, that would be page 11.
Let's get it. How are you?
Good evening, sir.
You got one?
All righty. Special one.
Special one to you.
There you go. All the color colors, very nice.
Thank you.
Smart city style.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does it come back though?
No, it always has.
Don't have to go over the border.
My God, I'm going to see.
What's that?
Stop job, I want.
Oh, cool. Yeah, I thought you had a slide from your table.
No, not for this.
Not for this?
No.
Any questions in particular, John, you'd like to?
Well, the, there were several questions submitted, which we'll go through online. A1621, 121, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing.
Yeah.
That's 1620, there was nothing, and then your other line would be 3310, there was nothing submitted. Are there any questions for Mr. Coach?
Come on, you're going to make this a little difficult for me. We're all worn out. The spreadsheet I gave you has percentage change. These are all the codes that come under the department. The whole thing is about a 2% increase. Let me see if I can pick out some major differences for you. Fuel oil increase, I'm sure you know already, has been taken out of the individual budget, so deduction there. I think the biggest change that you're going to see is down in lighting, which is the A5182.
He's just jumping right ahead.
Actually, let me go back to 1650, 165408, just want to talk to you about the phone expense, typically been trying to reduce every year. We're a little high actual in 2019, and that's because we paid maintenance for the 2020 telephone system. We had a 10% reduction by paying the two years, so that's why there's a little jump there. In 168404, fees for service, that's all our maintenance expenses that we pay every year for our highway technology, it's for a lot of our equipment, for our network switching, our, what else do we have? Civic Plus is now being paid out of there. That was spread all over in different places, so we put that in one place now, so that it'll always be there. There's about $16,000 to $19,000 added for Microsoft 365. Has that been discussed?
That was the question for A5182402. Why has this been increased? It's the software, Kinetics, Smart Net, Shot Spotter.
Right, so, let me just stay in the 16840 for a second. So, that, if you guys know about the Microsoft 365, all the Microsoft Office products that we're using is expired, so we have to jump to something. This is kind of a hybrid system where we don't have to purchase full licenses for everybody. A lot of our police and fire wants to have access to email. There's web-based versions that we can give them for a cheaper price, so we're looking at best cost savings to do that. But yet, we have to upgrade, because if we're young, there's different vulnerabilities that we're susceptible to get, so we want to make sure that we're doing that. At the same time, I'll tell you that all of our operating systems are being upgraded, because again, the Microsoft operating systems, they're not being maintained anymore, so Windows 7 is not being maintained anymore, so we're upgrading all our computers, and I believe by the end of the year, actually, we'll have all of them upgraded to newer versions that have a couple of years left in their lifespan on the software.
And want to add that, on the Microsoft 365, we're going to, that's going to add another layer of security too, right?
Absolutely.
I think it's a part thing to mention, one of the reasons why we want to.
And also give us some storage capability in the cloud as well for backup. Yep. So, now, if we can jump to the 5182402, so as you said, the increase there is for the Shot Spotter application, Kinetics, Genetek, which is the video software that we're going to be using, and Exact, which is, we'll talk about later in our capital, but that's a dashboard that shows analytics of the data that.
John, just to stop you on that, so is any of this coming out of our capital money that we've set aside, the $5 million that we've set aside?
No, these are services, so they wouldn't be eligible for capital investment.
So, this is not equipment that we're purchasing?
Correct.
The Shot Spotter? What is the Shot Spotter?
It's software for Shot Spotter. So, the hardware will be part of the National Grid Rev Demo installation we're going to talk about, get to the capital project. This is just the software in for the services that, again, wouldn't be eligible to take out of capital, would have to come out of operating.
So, then, one more follow-up. In the article today, I forgot which paper it was, I don't know if it was TU or GIZA, whichever, but I'm very concerned that we're not sharing this data with the county, the Shot Spotter in particular, and of course, our cameras. Is there any reason why we're not working with the task force and working in conjunction, sharing this data with them, at least?
Why would you say we're not?
Yeah, that was the comment in the paper. Whoever made the comment in the paper said we're not sharing the data.
That's not true at all. Goes into a central issue.
I know that for myself.
So, our county task force will have access to this data, the Shot Spotter, access to the cameras there throughout the city of Scott. The comment came from Bob Carney.
They do that now. They have to, they use the cameras now.
All right. So, we don't have that many deployed yet at this point either, but certainly, we've already provided them information for investigation, you know, out of what we have as well.
All right. Actually, we have a kind of person working right at the, with the cameras. I was very concerned that this return, we say we're not sharing.
So, then, why can't there be cost sharing as well if we're supplying information to the county DA's office and the task force and such? Is there an opportunity for cost sharing, so it doesn't all fall on the city?
I don't quite follow. We're building out the hardware sites. We're expanding on top of what they've already expended.
I'm talking about for this topic. If we're sharing information with them and helping their cause, I mean, just like the DA's office does the cameras around the city, is there?
Well, maybe we could, but we're, our hardware will be different than what they've deployed, so that we'll have more sensors on it. And we haven't got to that point. We end up being the primary user of it.
Right.
As opposed to, you know, the prosecution component after the fact.
Especially the Shot Spotter, shot spot information, which is going to be live data for our officers out on the street.
And this is an annual expense or one?
It's an annual expense, yes.
Any further questions? All right, we will move on to the capital budget. I think we've covered everything. Three of them, questions submitted, have already been answered. So, the first question on the capital budget is asking for details on the Smart Cities Plan.
Okay. Again, that's the city divided into zones for the Rev Demonstration Project. Next one shows, these are some of the actual lights that have been deployed so far. They're going out every day, still like conditioned on the weather, putting more of the fixtures Those are primarily in Hamilton Hill and Mount Pleasant. This is the Zone B deployment. And again, that first slide, we have the A and B zone, so the A is one side of State Street, the B is the other side of State Street. These are where the 250 intelligent nodes are going to go. Next area, go the other way. There we go. And again, and the one side, for today, the article's on Shot Spotter, we're testing different products for their effectiveness. So, in one side, where the GE Intelligent Nodes are going to go with AT&amp;T, we're going to use Shot Spotter. On the other side, we have acoustic sensors. Shot Spotter only focuses on gunshot detection, and they're locked into that, they really don't want to look at anything else. And the other deployment, which is the Cisco Simcon Presidio deployment, those acoustic sensors, again, we use, have the ability to do gunshot detection, but we will also look at other acoustic events. So, if there was an auto accident, car alarms, other things that may happen within the community so that we could alert the police or be able to plan or deploy resources, whether it's police, fire, or other services. So, it'll be a little bit more comprehensive study as that information comes in. The other, we're just sort of looking at Genetek for the video analytics. It's not only when the Shot Spotter goes off, they triangulate the location, relay that back to our dispatch center, we'll have that set up so that the information will go directly to patrol car. And Genetek, we're looking to be able to integrate some of the camera information, the optical sensors, so that they will be able to also focus on where the event is. Some of the history of where they've used Shot Spotter, it's not the event from the gunshot after, but some of it is the time leading up to it. So, it's to take Genetek and be able So, it's to take Genetek and be able to go back and do some of the analysis and tracking of what's happened five minutes, ten minutes before the gunshot. So, you see people move into the area where this conflict has happened and be able to document it. So, some of this, we're, again, going to be developing analytic tools, doing the study, leveraging our police resources, make them more effective, and hopefully, the whole thing is going to create a level of deterrent so that people are not out engaged in conduct that will result in somebody getting shot or loss of life. This is from National Grid, the LED conversion, the timeline that's going on. Again, it's moving ahead. Some things were delayed a little bit with some of the GE sensors. They didn't meet, some of the intelligent nodes didn't meet the initial inspection criteria from GE, so they've delayed it a few weeks. Again, it's going forward. We're going to do some of the community outreach now, so that where we have some of the things in place, we have the lights in place, we'll start to educate people of what we are deploying, and then also ask people what they're looking for. Because there'll be some applications that people will think of, or what are you going to do with the information that you gather from some of the sensors, their environmental, traffic monitoring, some of the police. The timeline for the Smart City attachments, again, the optical sensors, environmental sensors, acoustic sensors. Again, we have five zones. The initial deployment will be in the A and B zone. They're roughly the same number of light fixtures that they're going to do. And then, the system is, there's also engineering decisions, so it's kind of coming out of downtown, building through the city.
What exactly are A and B?
A and B are the green and blue.
Yeah, I did see that. I meant neighbors.
The B zone is a little bit of downtown with primarily Mount Pleasant, Hamilton Hill. The A, and also, B goes up into Central State Street a little bit. A is Central State Street, downtown, and then going up through the north end, Goose Hill. Working with National Grid, have deployment, also looking at the security requirements. Have high level of encryption, the awareness and best practices. There are, what's the term on each one? Other certificates on each device, so that they have to be programmed, activated in devices that interface with it, have to meet that criteria of the certificate or have to match the signature. We have actually separate networks for police, fire, CAD, RMS, our water, wastewater, separate and financials are separate, so that it, again, builds in layers of protection.
Not to interrupt you. Is all this in place right now, Gary? Or is this down the road? Or what are we talking about, like, all these wonderful things we're talking about?
Well, some of these, we're deploying them now as part of this A and B zone deployment. So, these are the criteria that we're putting in as part of the implementation.
So, this is happening...
Right now. So, the lights are going out, the lights are going up, those fixtures are going in place, and, again, you know, it's a thirty-six month total rollout with the Rev Demonstration with National Grid.
Mr. Frazel.
And National Grid is taking the cost of that deployment on track, the lights and...
Well, on the lights and some of the mesh network for them, they're also doing a LoPAN network where that will allow them to read their meters is the initial need for it. They, as part of the discussion that's been happening, they have been charged by the Public Services Commission with placing sensors for water detection in Long Island that came out primarily after Superstorm Sandy. So, they're looking at, with that LoPAN network, to be able to read water sensors, and in Schenectady, they're going to put gas leak detectors, so that we'd be able to detect gas leaks, deactivate it through that LoPAN network. So, it would be included either under their regulated business model or possibly just under fair market business model. So, they're exploring some of those deployments and what the value would be and what the true impact is. And as we get into this, we're going to, you know, reach out to businesses, people, community leaders to, people are going to come up with other uses when you have these networks in place and people begin to understand what the potential development is. So, you know, it's, where were we ten years ago? People had a flip phone. Today, you have a smartphone that has a huge amount of information on it. That growth is going to continue at an exponential rate, so that you get five years or ten years down the road, it's going to be a lot more information that's put through the internet, through your phone or mobile device. And, again, we want to have a network in the city that will be able to take advantage of those emerging technologies.
Ms. Porterfield.
So, how much have we actually spent?
I'll get to that in a minute.
Okay. Oh, good. All right. That was my question. Thank you.
I was going to say, we might as think alike, but I retract that statement.
We also recently got awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant for cybersecurity, so that will enable us to do some of these upgrades and also help set an example for other communities in terms of what we're doing here.
Part of the funding also provides for training for our city staff, so that they're aware of what not to click on, and I think that's extremely helpful, to learn all the types of emails and links that we get.
So, do you have, are you, do you have an assistant? Is there a...
Yeah, there's a network administrator that maintains the system.
Yeah.
It belongs to the board.
I meant, like, direct, I know it belongs...
Right under me?
Yeah.
We continually test, too, for deep network penetration. So, those are people who are attempting to breach the city off the record. We get hit probably in excess of forty times a day with serious attempts to compromise the system.
The firewall's are all up to date, the software in them. There's different software we're using that, we're even entertaining a software called Umbrella from Cisco that, actually, when you click on a link before it goes to the internet, it actually goes to this Cisco umbrella to check it, because fire definitions are updated daily there, so that would, you know, reduce any kind of issues that we have as well.
Just some of the list of the security protocols. Do you have any questions on any of those?
Now, just, where does fifty thousand dollar grant come from?
The New York State Homeland Security.
Thank you.
Will ask you to accept that.
Gary, can we get this PowerPoint email to us as well tomorrow morning? Because it's all on Braille to me right now, so. I mean, the next slide I just saw, you know, is like even smaller, so. But if you could email us...
If you can look at the one side, it's a little closer. When I sit here...
Oh, my gosh. Now, it's even a little smaller. All right, come on, everybody. Tell me email.
I can.
Mr. Iggy.
Yeah, I mean, the big fear of those things, the research I've been doing, is to secure that, are we putting resident personal information at risk? Because that seems to be a big problem. Shouldn't they have a say in this, what their information is going to be out there, how it can be compromised, either way? Because that's something that we need some community and knowledge conversation to maybe, because they should have a say in this also, if we're going to have their information prepared.
But we're not collecting any, everything is anonymous in terms of collecting the field. Information we have in City Hall, so it's real estate records, tax records, or other ones that have been here for a hundred years, you know, we engage in, it's public record, we engage in what I believe is the most advanced protocols for protecting.
In City Hall, we don't even collect, maybe you don't all know, we don't even collect credit card information. We pass that on to a third party. We don't, it goes to a third party, you know, knows how to handle it, just gets money.
And that's where our fees come in, right? The fees that are charged, correct?
Because hackers are very good at what they do.
Absolutely. We're working with some of the best, we're working with some of the best companies out there, Cisco, Presidio, General Electric, even Nice Tech, which is our consultant. That, you know, they have experts in that field. National Grid, of all people, has a large cybersecurity section to make sure that the grid is proper shape.
Again, they have very high level of security on the power plant. We have looked at it, or not use anything, we'd use Predex, GE's software, which, again, is more industrial, aircraft engines, power plants, industrial manufacturing. So, some of the world's best people have helped us, and, again, we have the best vendors in terms of what we're deploying, the overall security.
Some other things we're doing is we're using some other tools that set up, like, DN, it's called DN A Center, it's a digital network architecture, so that we set up, only certain devices are allowed on the system, and it identifies those devices when you plug it in, and it doesn't know what that device is, it puts it over here in a corner and won't let it in, until we look at it and make sure that it's okay. You know, we're certainly looking at wherever we can to make sure that security is number one, but we are, again, we're not collecting any personal information. It's all anonymous, and we have no plan to collect anything that's personal.
And some of the things are interesting where we've, some of the deployment on Erie Boulevard, get a little under thirty thousand vehicles a day on Erie Boulevard up and down. There are approximately three thousand vehicles more that come from the north to south direction than go south to north. So, people come into the city and go some other place. Over time, that one side of the road is going to wear more. You know, before, we wouldn't have known that or what the reason is. We would have assumed maybe there was some faulty application of the material or was poorly designed. But now, where you know the traffic is actually heavier, where we can monitor it on an ongoing basis, it'll shift how we do maintenance work and plan for the street surface in the future. So, those things that come up, that used to be, you had to go out, put devices, run a strip across the road, count it. This will give us better marketing data for businesses, again, where we deploy police for better traffic control. You know, some of these, where you were talking about, you know, the school zones, some of these cameras, where they'll track the speed of the vehicle also, so that we can then look, whether we do enforcement, whether you do signage, whether you do other things to, again, look to get compliance, to raise people's awareness of, you know, their behavior's just wrong and gauging kind of a risky conduct, want to get them to behave themselves. You know, the school zones tend to be a higher point of interest. We still want people everywhere to play by the rules and minimize the risk, so hopefully, auto accidents will go down, and just a series of benefits that we'll see over the long term.
Sure, that's very true.
That's what we're hoping. Even though they don't go down over one year or two good years, they want three, five years to.
Interesting.
Again, these are some of the things that we're looking to do for positive impact, you know, snow plowing, pothole detection. And you can look at these, and if there's any area that you have specific questions or want more detailed briefing on, you can either do it individually for council members or, you know, collectively for the group. Our Wi-Fi deployment, this is since the first of the year. We've had a little over two hundred thousand individual sessions. The graph to the right shows the use. Most of those are public. It's the police station, City Hall, and I like, I can't read the two smaller ones.
I was going to say, it's both fire station two and then fire station one.
Again, I'd rather this be emailed to us rather than a copy made, if you don't mind, because, again, the copy's a small thing. So, at least we can make it bigger on our screen, you know, that'd be appreciated very much.
But again, this shows the utilization that's happening, where people are participating in the network and taking advantage of it. Again, the partners we have working, it's a fairly extensive list, looking to, again, Union College is coming aboard, looking to have a more formal relationship with them, where they have a program now in their courses of studies for trees for data analytics, where we're collecting a lot of this, so it'll hopefully give us a resource to help analyze some of the stuff, and then also give the students practical applications for some of the leading edge in emerging sensor-based technologies that are being deployed. And with that, then we'll go to the...
You know, to Ms. Frazel's point earlier, the county's not on there in notice, Gary. Is there any connection with the county at all in this? What's the... I mean, I find it interesting that we've got the schools on there and the other county. Just a thought, I don't know what they could do or not do, or not really...
At this point, again, the camera network that is out there is complementary, is not robust in terms of what we're looking to deploy. But they have actually helped in some things. You know, the money in Vale Park, we're going to put some of this technology on the light fixtures that are going to go there as part of that upgrade. So, they're part of it, but they haven't been, you know, sitting at the table every time.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
This outlines the budget, some of the expenditures that we've made so far, and then what some of the projected expenditures will be at the bottom. And this actually shows a projected deficit, a little over, a little under thirty thousand dollars. I believe the numbers will actually round out where we're still negotiating some of the costs and the actual placement of devices. And we're, again, doing the four, Alex, the four community outreach sessions to do more general discussion. And it's the nature of this, there's still going to be specific applications and questions, so it's not going to be one event or one meeting where we're going to tell people everything that's happening, where people are going to have full buy-in. Really becomes an ongoing discussion and education process. And want, as people begin to understand it, the, want more community buy-in, the company we had in last week with the home monitor system, again, that came out of a hackathon done by Mayor Fisher. done by Mayor Fisher in Louisville, would look to have some neighborhood problems, community problems or business problems identified and then looking to use the data that we're collecting, this network that's in place, to allow people to make proposals for possible solutions or development of products and items that could run on the network or be used in homes or businesses.
Are there any additional questions, Ms. Porterfield?
On the encumbrances, well, part of this for Mount Pleasant, was there another grant outside of, well, the smart cities allocate? Money that you could decide that was given to that Mount Pleasant project?
If you go down the line, there's a million dollars that came from Assemblymember Santa Barbara. The kind of quick numbers in that, I think it's a little under 500,000. We're looking to do some of the upgrades of lights on Crane Street. And then the other was for fiber, some of the other features in Mount Pleasant. Even though we're appreciative of that grant, it's the nature that we have to front the money and then get reimbursed. We haven't been reimbursed yet.
Okay.
Is that correct, Anthony?
That's correct.
Thank you. I just wondered why it's the way it is. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Next question on the capital budget is details of the J Street realignment.
And then also, if people, when you get this email to you, if you have their questions or things you think about it, feel free to call me or call Jan over the next day or two. I'm sorry, Chairman.
Sorry. Now we'll move on to J Street realignment.
Oh, and part of the, I could interrupt you. Why wasn't here Thursday from the deployment that we had done, the Department of State? We were given the Trailblazer Award statewide recognition for our work with Amsterdam and Gloversville. Again, some of this that we're using with the codes office, we're saving now, Chris Lund just said, in about 30 minutes, an inspection where we're able to use the Wi-Fi network where we've been using it for police downloads, for in-car video. We've got the printers and other things so that the code officers don't have to come back to the office. And with the database that Unity City has in place, they have the full history of the property available to them. So whether it's the police department, codes, fire department, looking to expand that, get it in there so that it will allow us to deal with whatever problems are occurring at a property, hopefully one time opposed to having to go back multiple times or have to bring departments in different aspects of it. So again, thank the council for your past support on that. Again, we've got the statewide recognition on that where they're doing the initial rollout in the three cities and then Troy's lagging a little bit because there are originally four of us and just have been behind. They want to then roll it out statewide and they're really looking for a national marketing effort and deployment of the work that was started here in the three cities. So it's somewhat significant for all our efforts. It's taken a while, but it's all coming together.
Third time's a charm. We'll go on the J Street realignment.
Yeah, can you give us some update on the J Street realignment?
Again, it's a proposal to take J Street and have it modified to go out and intersect with Knott Street at the intersection where you go into the goal of headquarters.
Any additional questions on that? I'd like.
What I'd like is next year, it's whether we can get the design work done. There's some negotiation, Union College, but right away, my preliminary discussions there, they seem to be amenable to some land swap. We're making the property available so that, again, I haven't talked specifically to Chris Wallen, but we're looking for next year.
Next year for design, right?
No, do design this winter.
All right. Next, details on the Jerry Burrell improvements.
I think Kristen, she had the latest update on this.
Wasn't that her report?
Yeah, I think she did a, the very last one on the page.
She says the general, I don't know.
I didn't ask that one.
I don't remember.
Parks and Rec Committee or who?
No, I don't remember who sent that.
Who gave us that information?
Kristen.
We'll get it. Oh, and that from the Parks and Rec Committee? Were they involved in this?
Well, they're doing the specs and negotiating with the Department of State, design and implementation.
I'll just send an email asking Kristen to give us a written statement. All right.
Money's all being approved through the state.
The other capital budget questions that were submitted have already been answered. Are there any additional questions?
For just the mayor or?
Capital budget.
Well, fire, I guess the chief is here as well. The extractors, I don't want to touch base on that. Were we able to find out if we had the availability or the space to put in two additional extractors?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
That'd be good, yeah, if you don't mind. Right in the hot seat, how do you like that? That's a foil. Oh, you actually have a presentation?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
It's a surprise. A surprise presentation. Fire Department is always doing.
Look at this.
I apologize, we weren't ready yet last week when you started asking.
We were clutching, yeah.
Yeah, we weren't ready. So this presentation is about all the items, the three items that we put for capital. And I apologize that the numbers that we initially gave you were not correct. So we have three things that we'd like to, for your consideration. One, we already spoke a little bit about the extractor. So just a little background, according to the International Association of Firefighters, the IAFL, since 2002, cancer has caused 61% of career firefighters' line-of-duty deaths, which has taken over for what was the number one before, which was heart attacks and heart conditions. And when they call this line-of-duty deaths, cancer, as everyone knows, takes its time too. Heart attack could happen right on the scene, but they still consider these line-of-duty deaths. Compared to the general population, you can see that firefighters have a higher risk of coming down with cancer. 9% higher risk compared to the overall public and 14% higher risk of dying from those cancers. According to the, according to NIOSH, the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, there are certain cancers that firefighters tend to get at an alarming rate over the general population. And you can see they're listed there, from testicular, testicular cancer all the way to leukemia and also the percentage compared to the general public. So it's a, it's a major concern. So there are things that we, policies we have to try to reduce that within our fire department, gross decon when someone comes out of a fire. And just an aside, thank you to, first, to foresight of Chief Senical for taking this on to the mayor, to the city council. We now have two sets of gear from everyone cooperating or working together, I should say. And that is extraordinary to help us try to reduce this high rate of cancer. The next thing we need to do is we need to wash the gear. We have the guys do gross decon at the scene and then they have to wash themselves, their, their face, their neck. These are all contact points where cancer can start, you know, working on the patient or on the person over time. But the extractors, when you get back, they go on through a second set of gear, but they need to wash this gear immediately or as soon as they can and it removes all the carcinogens from their turnouts. That's the extractor. It's, well, we have now, we have two of them and they're 18 years old. And one's at Station One, one's at Station Two. The other two stations don't have any. The two we have need to be replaced according to the technicians that work on them. Sure it's not cost effective to keep working on them. And we see a need of having, besides replacing the two we have, have two more in the side houses. That, that keeps them in their, in their zone. We can take them down to Station One or Station Two, but you know, now we're, the north side unprotected or with even Mount Pleasant, they'll be protected. We don't really want to do that. So the cost of four machines, we had said 70,000 last week. That was erroneous.
Oh, really?
Thirty-five, two.
For all four?
For all four. And that's for.
Should have said changing back that better price.
We were working hard all week. Well, the extended warranty, we would suggest getting the extended warranty just because we were able to keep these two original ones for 18 years. These come with a three-year warranty. If we're, we're as diligent and have a little luck and happen, these machines last us long, the extended warranty may be something.
How long is the warranty for the extended warranty?
Extended warranty at least 10 years.
Total.
Except for each machine or for all?
All four. So that's the, that's the.
And again, we have the space and the capacity to install these.
For the other two, for stations three and four,
Yeah.
we may need some electrical work for the plug that's needed. But as far as hooking the machine up, they'll take care of it.
That's all there.
Yeah.
That's included?
Yes. All right, so that's that. Since we saved 35,000.
There it goes. Look at season and now here we go.
Thermal, thermal imaging cameras. We've had thermal imaging for ticks since about 2005. Just a little background of what they are. I think most people know what they are. They're, basically they allow you to see in conditions where you can't see. They show the contrast between something that's warm and something that's cold. So you're able to see in zero visibility. Also, because of improvements of equipment, turnouts, our personnel, our men and women are able to get in the building quicker and they're able to get in deeper, which is good because you want to get to the fire as fast as you can and put it out in that, that saves lives, it protects property, that's all those things. But you're also getting into areas that traditionally you may not have been able to, which is a good thing because it kept you out of, you know, out of rooms that are about ready to flash over or backdrop situations. The thermal imaging camera will give you very important data. It will give you the temperature of the area you're in. You could have over 1,000 degrees of heat at the ceiling and midway, maybe it's 500. Down on the floor, it could be about 100, 120, which you can survive. But you can see changes, real-time changes and the new ones are quick with the information. So you have the ability to locate victims in zero visibility. You have the ability to find the seat of the fire quicker. You can also detect smoldering fires, fires in the wall and that type of thing. It's, we've been using it too for the incident commander standing outside. If the fire is not actively showing, it's not blowing out a window, it's not through the roof or whatever, incident commander can do a quick scan of the building and detect, get a reasonable expectation where the fire may be from outside and can direct his crew. So it's all, they're all good tools. Also, you can use this technology on other calls, like hazmat incidents, where you don't need to get as close to see if you have any heat in whatever is happening. You can look for, for victims in, in areas of thick brush or in wooded areas. If someone was ejected from a vehicle and on the side of the road, you might be able to locate them quicker. So since 2003, NIOSH says that avoidable factors contributing to firefighter injury and death is not having the ticks or not using it properly. So this is the one we would put for your consideration. It is something similar to what we're using now, but it's with the new technology. Does very similar things, but it does it quicker, faster, better. Some of the things that it does, it's a cleaner picture, the sensors are improved. Technology is just, has, has come a long way since 2005. And that's the, the age of most of what we have now. So we'd like to vote for your consideration, six units at 49,000.
Chief, is there any, is there any value to the old ones?
Not really.
The contractors or anything like that?
We've asked if they would take some in, in exchange and they've really not given us a clear answer to that, but we'll continue to, to look into that. But they're at the point now where they don't even want to pick some because technology is at a mere point. It's grown so quickly. So they're 14, 15 years old. But if there is any value.
On the open market, are they sellable to the city of South?
We would definitely look into that.
We try and dispose of any surplus property. So if they don't work a deal on the initial purchase, we would put it in surplus property and put it out. There might be some use, like you're talking about.
Yeah, the contract, the insulation.
So, Chief, these press you're getting, these from the New York State bid sites? It is. Okay, so that's the contract.
And to your point, Captain Rockenshire is a, he's a captain in maintenance and he does a superb job with that. He leaves no stone unturned when he's trying to do these things. Does a great job. Last thing for your consideration would be a pickup truck.
Who gets that?
That would be in, in the utilities. We use, we have one now. It is a 2001, I believe. It's 19 years old. It works. It's nearly 20 years old. It works, but it's showing its age. It's showing some rust on the surface and also some rust underneath.
Probably to kick the body shop.
If you could come down, we could.
Right, there you go, right?
So we use our current truck, emergency calls, transporting equipment. It's our primary towing victim, primary towing vehicle. We have several trailers. We have a mass casualty trailer, a rehab trailer, hazmat trailer. And this is the vehicle that we use to get those trailers around. And we use it in day-to-day operations. So the one we're looking at is a Ford, that's Ford 50, heavy duty. It's a crew cab that'll allow us to transport personnel instead of using other vehicles. It is, that's not the exact figure. The exact figure, I think it's like 46,000. I have it. I can get it for you. That's under state contract. And then we figure, I'll fit it with lights and radios and we probably can do it for cheaper.
How about the tow equipment? Is that included?
Sorry?
The tow?
Yeah, that's part of the package.
That's part of the package.
So instead of the 8,000 that?
Nowhere near 8,000, correct. And probably nowhere near 60,000, cheaper than that due to.
So what are you going to ask for now?
We're trying, yeah. We're trying, yeah.
You ever have to...
Yeah, you should.
Probably not.
Look at you. So, Chief, so, or, somebody is, so the city share, we only have the city share, will it be 65,000, what happens to those other first two M's, how are those, or what am I looking at here?
No, that's just for the truck, that's just for the truck, everything together is about 150,000.
So, the first two M's are grants?
First layers, we're going to use, we're service, they'll need them right away, they can't wait until, you know, order them in June, and then, you know, we get the money in June, they can't wait to...
Thought they said it was a grant. That's what I'm wondering. So, this all has to be over the city?
This is capital budget, though.
All of the city is in the capital budget.
I must have misunderstood.
Okay, so...
Chief might have said a grant.
Okay.
So, Mr. Park, how many of those thermal imaging cameras, do we have six now?
We do, we do.
One on every frontline piece of apparatus, four engines, two trucks.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for the chief?
Very good.
Thank you for giving us some time, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, are there any additional questions on the capital budget?
Yes, I had sent a question in the email about the three new vehicles, the sewer fund, and I just wanted an explanation on why...
Mr. LeFond had said they were electric cars, is that the one you're talking about?
No, the sewer fund in the capital budget, they have two, F-550 dump trucks with plows, one F-350, and my question was, is that right now, in the budget, where vehicle repair is running like 1.1%, which shows that our vehicles are in good working order, so I wanted to know what we, why we propose vehicles.
No, they are not leased, we purchased these yet, especially the dump trucks.
I checked myself to be sure.
I think, you know, Paul wants to get dump trucks with the plows for two reasons, you know, to use them for the, for the, you know, the waste that they have at the department, but also in the wintertime, we have not only clean the sewer property, but also uses it to clean, if the sewer department has water, and use it on the streets.
Would you just follow that question to Mr. Park?
Yeah, one of them, I thought was, it's not quite that way, where there were repairs, and it's at the end of a useful life, I probably don't know about the other two.
I think mostly they're not, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul doesn't like to purchase anything, yeah, unless it's tapped in, you know.
Are there any additional questions? Sorry, I missed that one. I have a motion to recess.
And before you go, any questions, before you go, if you want to re, re-pass?
All those in favor?
I...
We are recessed.
We're reconvening Friday at 5:30.
Correct.
Right, Friday at 5:30. Very good. Excellent job, everybody, very good.
People have questions for Friday that you can't answer in advance, or you want somebody else here, you've got to let me know, so I can get somebody scheduled to attend.
So, they should email you, Mr. Barr?
They should email you, and you're going to...
I'll give to you.
Mr. Palamini, that say, because I don't want to get here Friday night and not be able to answer a question.
Right. You're going to bring your little machine. John, can you hook it up? John, can you hook up our little machine, your mine machine? Can you do that for Friday? Thank you. That's the best way to do it. He's starting right here.
No, I love it, just go.